Bring the Concord Carlisle School Committee meeting to order. Please note we're being recorded.
And the Concord School Committee meeting is in session.
So first matter, any public comments? Don't have any issues, it's okay. Reading in the minutes, we have a joint meeting, Concord meeting and executive session, so joint meeting 5:28, 6:11, and 6:24. Can I have a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let's have it. Executive session meeting minutes of 6:24. I have a motion to approve those.
Second.
Any discussion on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Yours.
And for the Concord Carlisle, the Concord School Committee meeting of July 23, 2019, do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Chairs and liaisons reports. The PEG Access Committee met a month ago, I guess, because we're meeting again tomorrow night. Some interesting discussion, a lot of transition going on there. And, but there seems to be certainly interest in expanding the things we might do together as far as program and interaction with students go, to sort of expand that and enhance that a bit from what we've done previously. So, you know, stay tuned. It's obviously a conversation that ends up having to happen between the administration and both building and district. And, you know, see what interest there may be in that. Obviously, we'd need some support from the building administration and probably a teacher or two who is willing to oversee some of that. But I think it would be exciting. And, you know, I'm optimistic that what develops there and the transition to the oversight by the town will be interesting and expansive.
And one of their, one of their discussion points, I believe, Wally, too, was around keeping it vibrant and making it more so at the high school, and then trying to drive it to the middle school as a resource as well. Knowing, you mentioned teachers, knowing full well it'll take internal enthusiasm to pull this off. And they know full well that they can support our instructional objectives very nicely with their, with their technology and their training.
You were there, too. Any other comments?
Very busy. You heard.
Anything you have?
Uh, no.
Anybody else have liaison reports? Correspondence, I don't think we have any. So, one thing before we get going, just so people don't think we're gonna jump right into it after the special ed discussion, but on Section 7, action items, vote to approve the opening of Tremont School, I'd like a motion to move that to the Concord portion of the meeting, as it's only a Concord vote.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'll just clarify. We had placed, had been working with the attorney to be sure we knew, and we just didn't have an answer specifically. We, we had pretty good intuition that it was a Concord vote, but because it's a 512 school, and obviously the region oversees our 9 through 12, we just wanted to confirm. So we got clarity earlier this week that it's definitely a Concord vote, so moving it makes good sense.
Great.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's moved. So, do you wanna kick us off here?
Sure. So, tonight we're asking for some, for consideration of an additional administrative position at the high school to lead special education in the role of both coordinator and team chair. And I'll give you some background on this. We've, as you know, we've been looking very deeply at all of our special education structures, most especially the leadership structure, to support the programs we're creating. We've made other changes, including a team chair at the middle school, which is a position we've put in and have filled and are actively going forward. And what's, what's evolved over the summer has been some changing dynamics at the high school. The resignation of the longtime department chair precipitated some of this conversation that had already been started back in the spring, easily, if not before. So the role we're really looking to create is someone to really do the administrative side of special education. The department chair role, and this, this is a longstanding discussion, should more closely mirror the department chair roles of the other content areas, which, as you can imagine, a curriculum content chair is by far leading curriculum, instruction, assessment, those real educational needs. What had evolved over time for the special education department chair was a much more broad band of administrative tasks. And for special ed, we know that includes IEP meetings, regulations, conflict resolution when, you know, families in the district aren't in agreement, oversight of the tutors, depths of other tasks that would not normally be part of the department chair role. So the timing seems such, and given the late hour of the summer, that part's a challenge, but the opportunity is here while we've got an opening and a vacancy to process anyway to talk on it. We also have a new special ed director of student services, who pretty quickly in July wondered how we've been operating at the high school without a team chair role. So again, I think all paths were leading in the same direction, the timeline just accelerated with the resignation. So I outlined for you the highlights of the job, and this would be a position that we'd like to broaden over time to include age, up to age 22. So that's why you'll see that throughout, given the kids we service through that age level. I cannot just talk on these very, in a big picture way. Overseen programming, liaison out of district placements, chairing meetings is needed, communicating with parents is needed, potentially evaluating some of the staff as needed. That's, those are tasks that are now covered in other places, so that would be only on an as-needed basis. We would like to move the evaluation of the tutors and assistants to this role. Coordinating, obviously a big portion of this role is coordinating with Mike Mistrillo, the principal, and Ruth Grooby, director of student services. Leading efforts, one thing we know we need to work on, which was through all of the West Ed reports, was consistent practices in IEP writing and documentation. We have, we're in compliance everywhere, but it's a little different at each school. So we'd want to have a liaison at the high school to try to be sure we're mirroring practices and language and things that we're growing at the other schools. We are working on creating a transition program, ages 18 to 22, so support to that. Policy and regulation, you can never have too many legal folks to go to. Overseeing or supporting MCAS accommodations, leading a collaborative team climate in the special education department, and supporting transition from both the Concord and Carlisle middle schools, which, transitions in general, which is not atypical, are a challenging point in special ed, but we would especially like to strengthen our connections with Carlisle. These kids are coming over. So if you were to consider this, we are in a fiscal healthy place because of the governor's budget. Do you wanna talk on revenues in the governor's budget that we did not plan for?
So we're still evaluating that, but right now, we, because we budget so early in the cycle, but way, way before the governor's budget is finalized, our Chapter 70 numbers, our Chapter, so Chapter 70 is state aid, Chapter 71 is transportation aid, all those right now are higher than budgeted, which doesn't necessarily help the general fund per se, but it helps our contingency, our EMD, that money goes right to EMD. So we're very, very healthy right now when it comes to revenue.
It's true for one year.
Excuse me?
This is true for the coming year.
Correct.
And I want for...
Uh, FY '20, I'm sorry.
Still have to find...
You know, what we've seen in the, you can answer too, obviously, what we've seen coming out of the budgets at the state level is increases, relatively healthy ones, but small, and there's an ongoing discussion still going on about Chapter 70. So I actually, I don't have my crystal ball, but I actually expect we won't see decline in Chapter 70. We may still gain a little bit if the rest of the discussion moves forward. The bigger beneficiaries will be the urban districts for sure, rightfully so. But I don't think at the moment, barring unpredicted economics, that we don't have crystal balls to predict. I think it should be fairly stable.
What does the cherry sheet tell us today, the plus side?
We're up about a little over $200,000. And the cherry sheets are a little misleading. So the Cherry, Chapter 70 won't change, but the cherry sheets are based off numbers that are from really FY '18, and then they, they change once we get our end-of-year reported. But right now, I think the governor was up about $30 per student. So it, the revenue right now is very good.
Good.
And I don't see it changing, and I know that a bunch of the letters that we're getting from Masbo and Mars, they're also saying that as well.
Great.
Ask who's, who's taking care of all those functions in the middle school?
In the middle school? Uh, we've, they had been shared among the assistant principals, and now we have a team chair in place that's taking on essentially the same role, mirror image at the middle school.
So a quick question. While we are transitioning and looking for a new person, do we have a way for parents to contact with questions, the IEP questions? Is there a process in place where they can get help?
So I think we've talked a lot about this, and obviously we're hoping for some timeliness to this, so it doesn't go too long that we don't have someone there. But I would always start with the special education teacher. As school opens, we have those direct service providers, and then you can certainly go right to the assistant principals or Mike Mistrillo in the short term. Again, we're hoping to move this right along, so we're not too long without the mediary role, because we also have a department chair discussion to have, too. So actually, that role is undefined at the moment, too. So for the short term, you need to talk with the teachers and then go to the assistant principals and principal for support if need be.
You know, I totally understand the needs and the importance, but the fact that we are trying to look for one a week before we start the school year, doesn't it, aren't we jeopardizing the chance of finding a good candidate for the long run?
Well, so what we did with counsel from our legal support, since you have not approved this yet, she said we could pose an anticipated position, meaning we could take it down and it never happens, for that reason specifically, and we're actually pretty pleased with the pool. So, seems like...
And there were a bit of a delay to start.
Well, that will need to get, well, though, usually that's, that's a negotiation with me and the other superintendent. At this time of year, we are highly encouraged to be professionally cordial to each other and pick up the phone and say, this hire is coming. When can the transition work for you? And collectively figure that out, so.
You're making the best of the opportunity that you didn't choose to have here. And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't note that, as you spell out these duties, not a few of these, most of these, in fact, were admirably fulfilled by the person who has left the position. It'd be hard to overstate how much he has done over the years. So I think it's with regret that it became necessary, but nonetheless, I think, I repeat, you've made the best out of that situation, but he's to be commended for what he's done for our district and for our kids.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think one of our assistant principals is fairly skilled in this space, too.
Yes, she...
As far as the transition goes.
Assistant Principal Katie Stahl is coming to us from Newton North, where she, they essentially, because they're a big high school, so they essentially had a high school sped director, and she was the assistant. So she comes very well versus sped. She did come to us because she was ready to not do sped all the time, so we're also trying to honor that. But in the meantime, she is very, very much back, has a strong background here to help us through the transition.
And another question.
Sure.
For the new position that you're creating, and figuring out what are the exact needs of the department, what's the best way to serve the students? Will this position be well-defined? When is this position going to be well-defined? And also, is this person going to be taking care of the transitions out of the, the school for the students graduating, moving on? And also, will this person also go and visit the schools that the students are going to to sort of keep track of, to be very hands-on?
Sure.
On what are the, what's the progress of the students that they are making outside of the district?
Right. So the vision is that they would become more involved with the out-of-district students. I have talked a lot the past few weeks with Ruth Grooby. We need to make our way to that, especially given that we're in a place we didn't expect to be. And you're right, the first order of business here is to define this, take this list and make it even more specific. I think there will probably need to be a bit of an entry evaluation by the new person working with the person who's been doing this sped department leadership, and Ruth, to just, and Mike Mistrillo, of course, to just assess what the priority needs are. I think that's gonna drive what's on this list, needs to be addressed first. The longer-term vision, and by long-term I may mean six months, would be towards more connection with the out-of-district placements. That's become a huge priority to us. The vision initially had been that the current out-of-district coordinator would start to focus more on K-8 and a little less on high school. We can see now we need to be more blended than that, which I think is a lot of benefits. But we also know that one person with our current number of out-of-districts has a really hard time staying connected back to the schools here. So we're, we're a little bit of a work in progress here. It's been just a little over six weeks since Ruth got here, an unexpected change. So we're, we're gonna need to do a needs assessment at the high school specifically. I feel like the other schools have come, come along significantly, but given all of this change, we need to step back and relook at it.
I have a couple of specific questions.
Sure.
The newly created program ages 8 to 22.
Newly developing program that doesn't exist yet. Our vision is an 18 to 22-year-old program for our kids in transition, which means they've aged out, but still are required to receive services. We're developing a vision that hasn't happened yet to create that over here at Ripley. You're not, shouldn't have it in your high school. And we're looking at how we can allocate staff appropriately to do that. So it's a, it's not a program that's being implemented at the moment. It's under discussion and one we're hoping to launch in the near, shorter term.
And the pathways program is separate distinct?
Yes.
It only goes to 18?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So one may feed to the other?
No, understood.
That actually is part of the, the piece that we'd like to look at.
Okay. And then the MCAS accommodations, does that hurt? My experience is, is it was in guidance?
Yep.
And I don't know if that's changed, or...
So we actually have guided, it's collaborative at this point, which I think will still remain the case. Guidance along with a teacher leader who is stipended to do that role. What we saw as a need for was an administrative target to support those roles, so that our accommodations were also reviewed by someone at an administrative role. So we've been doing that, but not as cleanly as this role will have with one person designated to it.
Just my feedback, and that was a few years ago, but it was a fairly difficult process, and it puts a lot more on the families than was support that was provided.
Okay.
Because there's a bit of a chasm between special ed and the person in guidance who was doing that.
So I guess you're validating the need?
Yes.
That this role fills some of those gaps.
Yes.
Yeah. Through no one's fault, I'm sure.
Yes.
The load is...
It's a lot.
Yeah.
And just one more question. Approximately, how many students are IEP or special ed students?
Um, it's, our averages are pretty similar across both districts, so it's, I'm gonna say 15%, but it's probably a little bit higher than that.
And the word of the 504s, does this...
No, we're actually, we're actually pulling 504s and relooking at that. The school psychologists have been running those, and we're actually having guidance run them going forward. And we think that's a better balance of the load of both.
Okay.
And they'll both be better served split up like that.
Great.
But that said, Ruth Grooby will own both.
Right.
Hence her student service title.
So that's inflexic change, I mean, you're trying this...
That's our plan to open school.
Yeah, no, understood.
So, once you get in it, sometimes you realize it needs tweaking.
Yeah.
And it's the guidance department that would take care of the 504 accommodations for testing, usually correct and fast, so.
I think that's been another one that perhaps hasn't been as tight as we might wish, and so guidance owning everything will clean that up, so it's much more streamlined.
So there will be one person basically taking care of everything?
Yeah.
That's the process.
Any other questions, comments? Given the nature of this, I'm gonna ask if anybody has public comment or saying none.
There is one.
Oh, yes.
I have a question. How much is it gonna cost?
So we posted the position between $120,000 and $130,000, which is in line with our other assistant principals.
There's another question?
Another question.
Sorry, Wally, I couldn't hear you for that second that you was... Can you talk a little bit, Lori, about the role that Tom played, and is what he was doing completely going to be this new person, or is it in a department chair, kind of what the department chair is gonna do? Or is that where you're kind of...
We actually are waiting for the teachers to return to formalize the department chair role. The, one, we believe that's the right way to do it, and two, the, the contract insists that we ask for input. So we are, we've held off on that department chair role conversation, which is, I think, also going to impact what we have here, but we wanted to be inclusive about that despite the timing we're facing. So we're gonna clarify all that over the next week or so.
A lot of moving parts, right?
A lot of the moving parts, yeah.
One thing I didn't see up there in the bullet points, and again, I understand that it's being defined, is there's not, there's a lot of discussion about keeping kids in district, providing more inclusive education, and making sure our students are, all students, I'm gonna say every student, every teacher, every staff member. Is this person also gonna be a personnel?
Oh, I, I expect so, certainly.
Put this all together, so we can have a...
I certainly expect I'll be part of the team that is discussing all this, which we're gonna open up to the entire faculty next week to talk on our efforts and priority of inclusive environments, and how we get there, and the professional development we need to do. So certainly, the candidate should have that as a, a vision and philosophy. They may be learning and looking for support, just like all of us will, and have best practice to get from where we are to where we need to be. So that's really a lot of this year's work, as you'll hear the strategic plan discussion.
Is this person going to be sort of the liaison for the inclusive, for inclusive learning for students on IEPs and other students in the school? Or is this going to be a separate role for somebody else in, within the school, to facilitate programs for, uh, learning opportunities for teachers and incorporating programs?
Yeah, I don't see that as this person's role specifically. I think they're gonna be on a lot more in the procedural administrivia kind of things that are really important in special education. I think the higher-level work that is coming out of the strategic plan, part of the rationale for the levels of support we're putting into the buildings, is so Ruth Grooby's available to do that and lead that along with, with me and the, the other district leadership. So that's the goal, I think, is that, you know, one of the quick fixes we had here that I was not willing to consider, and I'm glad for any support you give tonight, she could have hopped into the high school and just kind of mandated this together, and that would have lost all of the effectiveness of what we had been trying to gain. So the goal would be that this role is that middle layer of support, so that Ruth is available to do that big-picture thinking work. And we aren't doing that in isolation with Kristen Herbert, who runs all our professional development, would be part of that conversation. It'll parallel, and some of this we'll talk next week when we do our workshop, parallel some of our cultural competency work of some needs assessment first, you know, what are we doing well, what are we not doing well? And then looking what the plan to, you know, implement and improve upon that will be, which I'm sure includes professional development.
Excellent. So we'll end discussion on that and move to action items. A has been moved to the Concord portion. So vote to approve CCHS APES Sustainable Farm End of Year Trip.
So this is a trip that was brought to us over the summer. Mostly, they like to get approval as soon as possible, so they can post it for the school year and gain interest. This is an in-house trip. Aaron, if you don't mind scrolling up so we can see the details. So if you'll see, it's a trip going out next May to Dorchester, New Hampshire, as part of the AP Environmental Science Sustainable Farm work that they do. I guess I'll let you, let me know how many other questions you have. It's a fairly simple, straightforward overnight trip out of state.
I looked at the information the D Acres provides about their program, and it looked really, really good.
Yeah.
Really sound, and probably really appealing to CCHS students. One thing that's not in here because it's preliminary is the list of chaperones, but it looks like three are anticipated for accompaniment to students.
They may not have been named yet, but the ratio is determined.
And that's something you'll watch over time to see that there's that rough ratio achieved.
Yes.
Okay. Good. Any questions?
Yeah. Any waivers for, for this that have to be done before we can approve it, or?
It's pending those, if you read the motion. Thank you, Aaron. The condition, it's conditional on assigned liability waiver.
Okay. That's awesome.
Yeah, good question.
And this is part of class, so if somebody can't afford it, they'll be covered. Okay. I have a motion that the Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to approve the CCHS APES Sustainable Farm End of Year Trip from 5/9/20 to 5/10/20, with the condition that assigned liability waivers are received from all participants.
Second.
I move the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Next item is the vote to approve the special ed coordinator and team chair, which we just discussed.
Special language we need?
Is there language on the motion?
There isn't, I'm sorry, so...
So I would vote to approve the CCHS special education coordinator and team chair as described by the superintendent.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. And vote to approve CMS and CCHS half-days. Can you tell us a little bit about this?
So two different pieces, but they overlap, so that's why it's all in one discussion. The high school, per the contract, has four early release dates, so we needed to get those dates to you, so we could share them with the community. They are October 15th, December 3rd, February 25th, and March 31st. What we proposed to do, one of the goals that we've had, is to provide ourselves some opportunities for pre-K-12 professional development that have not been available in the calendars and structures we've been working with. So we had anchored one of them on the full professional day for the middle and high schools in, on January 21st, which is a Tuesday. So we've made one change there, so that Tuesday afternoon, we'll be running some pre-K-12 professional development. Our hopes was to create two other opportunities, and so that's what the rest of this memo is outlining. The hope was that on October 15th, no, I'm sorry, December 3rd and February 25th, we could create similar opportunities, which is why the high school dates are on Tuesdays. And we then had looked at the, the reality of what the day looks like, and if the middle school gets out on its normal Tuesday schedule, they come into the game very late in the afternoon. It's not a full day, but it's a 1:30 dismissal, which is not enough of the afternoon to be beneficial. So we were looking to parallel the Thanksgiving kind of half-day schedule to drop them back to a three-hour day on December 3rd and 25th, which is a change to the calendar that you've voted already. So we would hope to add those as true early release days on the 3rd and 25th, which then So we would hope to add those as true early release days on the 3rd and 25th, which then aligns those. The high school, the other two days, the October and March date, would be CCHS usage building-based. So this, we're really excited about this. Really, this is where teachers are going to get choice. Kristen's been creating paths. Most of them are about inclusion and different opportunities for special ed. So we'll share that when they're a little bit tighter, but she's got a good start on what those paths and choices will be, all of which paralleling strategic plan work with our particular emphasis on inclusion, which is also kicked off next week by our keynote speaker on Monday morning.
Great. So I just have a couple requests. Should we approve this? That, because I, to get contacted by two high school parents asking me that the early release dates have been eliminated, and I said, no.
No.
That we update our calendar and we post, and that the principals send out a notification?
Yes.
We can't overcommunicate it.
Yeah, right. And I know this isn't an opportunity to skip a full day or, you know, it's not that kind of a notification, but, you know, for some working families, except for...
Absolutely.
You might be to make a comment.
Which is one reason we wanted to get it on tonight's agenda and not do it later in September, so you could get word out. Thank you.
So can I have a motion to approve the half-day schedules for CCHS and CMS? It'll be both committees voting on this. For early release dates of October 15th, at the high school, October 15th, December 3rd, February 25th, March 31st, and CMS early release on a half-day schedule, rather than the regular Tuesday afternoon schedule, on December 3rd and December 25th.
Salute.
For both?
For both.
Second for both? All in favor for any discussion? All in favor for the region?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Carries. And so with that, unless anybody has anything else relative to the joint committee meeting, you will adjourn the joint committee?
Thank you.
Have a motion adjourned. So move? Second?
Aye.
Very good. All right, and the...
See you next week.
Good night. And the Concord School Committee stays in session, and we will...
I need five.
Okay, very good. And we're out for a brief recess. And the Concord School Committee is back in session, thank you. Do we have any public comments? None. We move to our first item, and that is the reports, chairs, and liaisons. We don't have Heather among us, but I know we've had a couple of meetings, some important, some that will fall under the next item, the building committee. Liaison reports?
Yeah, let's give a... I just, now these seem like a long time ago, but the select board met quite frequently until this past week or so. And one of their big discussions has been this capital planning committee, which we're going to vote on later, perhaps nominating representative. It looks right now like it's a six-month or short-term committee to look at the full range of building projects, it sounds like, large projects over $100K, but maybe I'm wrong. I never saw the final charge, so I'm not exactly sure. And to look at the needs of across the town and schools. Look at the needs, the building needs, or the capital project needs, might not just be buildings. And to sort of present to the community what those are. Maybe, I think they've talked about 10 years out. And so we really haven't had that discussion in a while as a community in the town of Concord about, you know, what the needs are for the town.
And was this at one time to be a task force?
Correct. I think they were always trying. They feel very strongly, the select board, that there should be strong participation by the finance committee. And there's a bylaw that the finance committee cannot sit on any other committee. So they will have a strong input, even though they cannot be a voting member. And I don't think this is the intention, that this, this is more of a collaborative effort than a requiring, not requiring a vote, I don't think.
So in fairly short order, we should be hearing from the select board in regard to seeking a rep from this committee.
Right.
We have that request, so we should talk on it tonight. It's one of your votes.
So we could talk more when we get to that agenda item? Maybe that's a way for it.
Excellent. Other reports?
Yeah, I don't have a formal report on it, but I just have to really thank Stephen Crane in his first week on the job. He has spent hours with us already. He was here on day two with a request to come by the end of day one. Jared and I spent an hour and a half with him. He then attended the building committee meeting on Thursday. Jared's working with him. You'll hear in a minute or two about the OPM work that we are doing to put a contract together. I've been asked to sit in on the senior leadership team of the town every Monday morning, which is a fantastic invitation, just to streamline communication with all of the town departments and keep us all on the same page. So that was a very welcome invitation. His desire for a strong partnership here has been very clear since he got here a week ago.
Great.
So I'm very excited about the potential for that and really the priority he's made us. I think it's good for everybody.
Good.
Yeah. It is, it's very so.
Very good, thank you. The building committee updates. I think, Lori, you are...
I'm going to let Jared kick us off.
Okay, Jared, you can be so kind.
Where to begin?
We've made a lot of progress. That's where we begin.
So I'm not sure where we left off. So I'll just go back to August 5th. So August 5th, the RFS bids were, the bid was closed. We received nine bids.
For OPM?
For the OPM.
The owner's project manager.
Yep. So we received nine, which is a great, great response. Usually, you're lucky if you get five. So we got nine. We evaluated all nine of them on that Tuesday, August 6th, and then we ranked them, and we brought forward five for interviews on August Wednesday, August 14th. So we spent all day interviewing, about an hour each, interviewing five different firms. We short, well, we voted three of them in order, one being Hill International. And right now, we are in sort of contract negotiations, Mr. Crane is. They're going to send over, Hill is going to send over their price proposal this week. Yesterday, Mr. Crane and I had a conference call with Hill, just an introductory. He had never met them, and sort of just discussed a little bit about what our expectations are and what theirs is and what they can do for us. So we're hoping by this Friday that they, we have their price proposal and Mr. Crane negotiates with them successfully.
I need to ask you, how was your summer vacation?
What's up? But it was, this is fun stuff. I really enjoy this, so.
I have to say, Jared's commitment to making this process as successful as it's been has been nothing but exceptional. So I am grateful, we all should be, for the time he put in, that every time the subcommittee met or the larger committee met, there was just so much readiness that questions were well set up ahead of time, information already collated and gathered, and we just hit the ground running, which is why we're on the pace, the pace we're on.
Thank you.
We've leapfrogged, believe it or not, a number of towns that were accepted into the MSBA last year. We're already ahead of them. So we plan on, hopefully, once we get them signed up, they're already starting on the RFS for the design, so that's something that the OPM is going to do. And we're hoping, you know, September 5th, that they're locked up, they come into the building committee meeting, and they give us a draft.
So assuming you get their proposal Friday, is that correct?
I think when we, I think between now and Friday morning, we'll have the proposal, and hopefully by end of Friday, we'll have negotiated a contract.
Okay, great. So then they hit the ground running on Monday or Saturday morning or something like that?
They already have, believe it or not, so they hopefully come in competitively because they are working on the design. They did say that.
Good.
And then the timeline included, we don't have another building committee meeting until September 5th, and the hope was that we could use the intermittent time to start onboarding them, get a leadership. We've created subcommittees of the middle school building committee, so the management team, which is the chairs and myself and Jared, to sit and just acclimate them and talk on how we got where we are and some of the next things that are coming. But it was a really healthy response, I have to say. We heard five really strong candidates of the nine, which is a big number, and just to hear the scale on which they're going to support us now is personally pretty exciting. And, you know, we were able to really look at fit to Concord as well as high-level priorities that were very clearly outlined in the RFS, and Hill really just hit all of those marks exceptionally.
They're a big firm with a deep team.
Yeah.
I think that is comforting because, you know, if something does happen with one particular individual, or they feel overloaded, they can make accommodations to that. So I think that's really important because it's a big project.
Yeah.
What time is it, September 5th?
We meet 7:30 in the morning, all the building committee meetings.
Why are you so late?
And that, that meeting will move here. It was previously typically a townhouse simply because the numbers now are expanding. I think we should note the subcommittees are coming together, I think, very, very well so far. I think everybody is pleased with how they're coming together. The interviews were taped and are being made available by Media. So if people want to binge-watch five-week, five-what hours of interviews, I think the wisdom of the selection committee will be pretty evident. Hill stood out very nicely.
You were here for the whole day yourselves, so thank you.
A little bit of it. So thank you, Jared.
Just one other update that I want to say in public. MSBA has reached out to us. We did submit a statement of interest for the project. Every other year, they update their documents, so they come on site and look at the schools. So they are due here September 24th to do so. So this means we've moved from the first round to the second round, which the numbers they're giving us for this year means there were 61 applications and they're down to 30. That's all very similar to the past two years, and moving to the second round is exactly what happened the last two years. So I've been transparent with them about where we are, and obviously, we're going to work collaboratively with them and show them the schools again, and I'll update their documents, and we'll go from there.
So one other public comment. I see that now you've published a district webpage for the middle school, so that's going to be where citizens will come and get information.
Sure.
On the project from there.
Erin, do you mind? I'm sorry I asked you to pull that up, but now I'm going to ask you to switch over to the webpage. We did, it's a tab right along the main menu of the district webpage. Erin knows a lot about this.
And easy access from the town website.
And the link between the town webpage, and there'll be a growing amount of information here. This is meant to be the repository for meetings, meeting information, as well as documents and presentations that get produced along the way. So the structure's there.
Just a comment. As this grows, it would probably be helpful to have subcategories in here of minutes and presentations and otherwise...
Do you see the folders at the bottom? I think we're in agreement with you. There's a start at that, and we need to get delineated even further.
It may get more...
Yes.
Busy and hierarchical, to your point.
Yes. We agree with that and...
Oh, I'm looking at a different place. So let's look down at the bottom. We've got four.
Go back to the main middle school web. There you go. Those pretty icons are actually the subcategories at the bottom.
So we're looking at committee, meetings, and minutes, presentations, and documents, and if it needs to be further organized as things grow, we'll certainly do so. So you might, there's a Concord Middle School Building Project under advisory and subcommittees.
For the town?
No, on our website.
There is another spot that people might...
Which, it's a bug. So if somewhere, so we might want to...
Can you check on that?
Meld those together. Under the school committee advisory and subcommittees, there's a Concord Middle School Building Project.
From before.
Yeah. That could be confusing to people.
Yeah.
And we had a couple of conversations. It was also noted that media links here would be...
Yes, so we need to add those. Down the bottom here, and then there are also on the left-hand side, then up here. Media videos, the town's website.
Good. And I believe, Erin, you and Nicole Bloomfield have spent a good amount of time putting this together for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. One question, once you formally, Mr. Crane formally completes the negotiation for the OPM, would it be typical to send out a press release or something like that, or maybe update the page with...
I would think that's a very smart idea. Thank you. We've worked really hard to be very, very transparent.
Yes.
So I don't see why we would do that.
It'd be great to announce.
I do, too.
It's a big milestone.
Yeah. It definitely is.
All right, thank you very much.
No, thank you.
We move to action items. With your approval, I'd like to insert a new item A, and that is bring on our school leaders from the Tremont School. Thanks for your patience. We have an item before us in a moment, not just yet, in a moment, to look at approval for the Tremont School and a Concord location. But I think we ought to begin, Lori, with you and a bit of an orientation to this, please.
Sure. So Massachusetts law requires that the local school committee approve any new private school proposed. What I learned very quickly over the last two weeks is that it happens fairly infrequently, not just here. Our private schools are very longstanding and incredibly well-established. Other communities, funny, as their request came into us in July, other superintendents were putting out things to the lists, they're like, wait, what? You know, so we, what we've done to get to this place today, and I want to thank Tremont for, you know, being so forthcoming in their request and providing information to us. So hopefully tonight, you'll hear all the work that they've put into that. But we're really being guided by several things. One is Mass General Law. A second is our own school committee policy, which does reference the need for the committee to approve. And then third, legal consult with our own legal counsel. And so, you know, I think your role tonight, from my best understanding, is to look at what they're looking to set up and programmatically look for some equity with our offerings. The law says the committee shall approve, which is a really strong legal word, I was reminded by legal counsel. I think it creates some little level, and I felt this in you over the last week, and I've shared with them a little bit of that, wow, how do we manage the conflict that gives us when there's some expectation for a positive outcome, but this is a committee that does its due diligence? So I think that's the role they're here to have tonight, is to help you feel comfortable. Having looked at the documents that we received on Friday, I feel very comfortable with what they're offering, and I think that opinion should factor in, I would hope. But they're here to answer your questions, hear questions, take concerns. They are relocating, so they are not a new private school, as might be the case in another scenario. So they're an established setting, which I think also is worthy of factoring in. And I think we'll invite them to come up, and if you're willing, let's let them share the big picture with you, and then you can ask questions.
That sounds great.
Perfect. Would they care to join us right here at your...
Sure.
Just on the mics around. What's on, what's not?
Yeah, why don't you both come here? Erin, do you mind scrolling the presentation? Thank you.
So welcome.
Thank you.
I know it's a busy time of year for you two. We'll ask that you introduce yourself, of course, and then the floor is yours.
I don't know if I'm on. Is one on? Oh, here we go. Thank you.
Hold it. Just switch it.
I was just going to take this. We share. Thank you. So Vice Chair Booth, committee members, Dr. Hunter and colleagues. My name is Tina Grocer, and I'm a faculty at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, and I'm also the Education Chair at the Tremont School. I would also add that I was a ten-year administrator in the Arlington Public Schools a lifetime ago, and I'm here with my colleague Ben Niles, who is the head of school at Tremont. And we'd like to answer your questions tonight, and I'm going to ask, Erin, if you would flip to our first slide there. The first thing, we very much appreciate your time this evening. The first thing, we very much appreciate your time this evening and your willingness to hear about the Tremont School. We're only moving 2.9 miles away, but we're excited about coming to the Concord community and becoming a part of the community here. We especially appreciate your doing so on such a short timeline. So this was not our ideal timeline either, as Minuteman Regional Technical High School finished its new building, which is lovely, we were in a building behind Minuteman, and they started looking in a very entrepreneurial way about what else they could do with their campus, and decided not to renew our lease and to push us out early, actually. So we've had a nice relationship with them, and to sustain that, we started looking, and here we are, coming to Concord, and we're very excited about it. We think that the values of Concord fit very well with the school and what the school is trying to do. But we appreciate your forbearance in seeing us on such a short order. Could I have the next one? So who we are, who are we? So Tremont is a school that is really seeking to help all the students reach their full potential. Students are encouraged to become the very most successful version of themselves, progressing academically, preparing to meet goals, and really finding that sense of fit and belonging that some kids struggle to find, finding their voice, and really becoming confident in a creative way. We are graduating critical thinkers, problem solvers, and compassionate and dynamic citizens. That is our aim. It's not for every student. Tremont is a school that, for certain students, it's the exact right place to be. Could I have the next slide? So who are they? So we're a small, but deliberately diverse community. So we're really, you know, 40 kids now, a little bigger, we plan to grow. Kids who come, they're typically managing, they're doing okay, but they're not thriving where they are. So they're not kids who would be in a therapeutic school, and we don't intend to be a therapeutic school, but they are students who don't necessarily feel at home in their school community, they need a smaller environment. Sometimes they have both faster or slower learning paces than their peers. They might take a little longer, or they might be off thinking about something and not necessarily paying attention to anything in the classroom because they've got a project in their head, and they already built it four times over, and then they go home and do it. They often are kids who don't do well with traditional forms of learning, so while we're helping them learn to take notes and have those kinds of learning skills that they're going to need for college, they are kids who won't necessarily attend in the ways that more traditional classrooms might ask them to. They may need to move around a little bit more, the kids are kind of bouncing out of their seats. So I do a lot of work in public schools as part of my day job, and I look at kids and, you know, and I see them kind of, you know, just sort of pushing at the edges of their teachers' patience of the program, and I think, oh, that's a kid who might need that kind of, you know, get up and run around and move a little bit more, or monitor their physical activity a little differently. So for those kinds of learners, Tremont's really been transformative. And the kids go on to do all sorts of things, they bring a range of talents and challenges, both, and they pursue expertise, and we have kids going off in the arts and the sciences, mathematics, computer science, design, and so on. So basics, we established the school in 2011, serving grades five to 12, plus a few post-graduates now. Forty students enrolled for this coming school year, with a strategic plan to grow slightly, not much more than that. It's really that one-to-one kind of relationship that kids can have with teachers, and the small size of the school that matters. Student teacher ratio now is five to one, 100% of the faculty with advanced degrees. And our graduates are both college-bound and workforce-bound, and, you know, so we support them in college readiness and in the kinds of curriculum they need, but when students are clearly going elsewhere, we'll support them on that journey. So it was a parent-driven initiative. The parents who started Tremont were parents who wanted to see their children go to one school. They all had kids in a small school, the Tobin School in Natick, and as they aged out, some of those kids were on the spectrum and really needed very specific kinds of support, and they had siblings, and the parents wanted their children in school together. So they started Tremont, opened in 2011 as a middle school in a Greek church in Weston. Then it moved to, it eventually moved to Lexington, but we then established the high school program as the kids aged up. It has NEASC accreditation, the National Association of Schools and Colleges, received in 2018, and our first graduating class was in 2018. So we now have kids, seven kids off, seven off in college.
Yep.
Is that right? So we have kids at Tufts, Masar, Vassar, Sarah Lawrence, and I have one at WPI as of yesterday. So what does it mean to be NEASC accredited? This is, I don't know what you know about this, so I'm just going to review it, because it's quite a process to have NEASC accreditation. So this is an old and, you know, well-thought-of organization, it's the place that accredits Harvard, because I get asked for all my syllabi for, you know, things for Harvard when they're going through their cycle. But our accreditation first, you become a candidate, so you ask to be a candidate, you then articulate your goals and objectives, you need to document all your school practices, there's rigorous faculty reflection, documenting the curriculum and the pedagogy. They came for a multi-day site review and spent quite a bit of time with us, talking with all members of the community. And then there's deliberation process following that. It's ongoing, they don't then go away. We continue to reflect and work on the goals that we've set and the goals that they've set for us for further growth and review. We were one of the youngest schools to receive accreditation, and the visiting team members talked about how they thought that it filled an as-yet-unfilled niche in the educational landscape, so we were really pleased with the outcome. I'm going to turn to Ben.
Thanks, thank you. Thank you all for having us. I'm Ben Niles, I'm the Head of School. We gave some information to you all about our program and our curriculum that I hope you found informative. There wasn't much space in there, though, to talk about so many important aspects of the school, which are the values and the beliefs that inform that program. So I wanted to take a moment to share our thoughts about that with you all. Our logo is three mountains, and that's with intentionality. They symbolize for us the three peaks of academic social-emotional development for our students, and they are equal in size, and we take that very seriously at our school. None of those three are in service of the other, they all work in combination, in our view. So that leads us to a very strong commitment to social-emotional development at our school, and it's something that you can feel in the hallways, that there's something active going on there in that regard. We feel that in order to fulfill that commitment to social-emotional development, that means that we need to take on a collaborative and inclusive approach to our curriculum, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Tina's going to tell you a little bit about the living curriculum, which is a specific approach to the curriculum that highlights collaborative and inclusive interaction between the students and the teachers. We feel that our students work best with experiential, project-based learning. We like to get our hands dirty, we like to be outside whenever possible, or tinkering on things. One of the center points of our school is our makerspace and art studio, where you'll find kids working not just on art, but on projects that are a part of their curriculum. So very much, all of the curriculum is based on creating things. And all of this, of course, goes to the idea that we are working with kids in order to help them become better learners. We're helping them learn how to learn so that they may become more informed citizens and be engaged in their communities when they leave our school. So I also wanted to share with you some of the beliefs that we have as an institution. And when I say beliefs, these are things that we repeat to each other as staff members on a regular basis. These are things that are very much alive in our school. We believe strongly in our students' ability to reach their full potential, and it is our job as educators to help them reach that full potential. So every moment of our day, in the classroom, in the hallways, in the cafeteria when we're eating lunch, what we're doing is working with a great deal of intentionality with the students, that's why we have such a small ratio at our school, and so that we're able to work with them throughout the day on reaching their potential, and each of those students, that means a different thing, we're very aware of that. So each of our students has different learning needs, it's our job to supply them with the supports they need to reach their fullest potential in that regard. We find, in our experience, that this works best when we're working with very authentic, hands-on material, as I mentioned before. One of the defining features of our school is that we work in mixed age groups. So we have fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders all working together, very often in one classroom. They, that group never divides out into age groups, but they're always mixed with each other throughout the day. The ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders, sometimes they divide out into ninth and tenth grade groups and eleventh and twelfth grade groups, but for the most part, they're mixed together throughout the day as well. We do things like math, we approach math on a skill-level basis rather than age-grade basis. So this, again, contributes back to the value that we mentioned before of democracy, inclusion, collaboration, and working together as citizens at the school. So we don't have, there's very little divide in our school, which is really wonderful. And then I think, Tina, if you don't mind, I'm also going to guide them to your thoughts about the idea of taking ownership of learning, that's part of our living curriculum, which is a big focus of how we approach our curriculum, is this idea that we're moving kids through different stages of trust in the learning process. We have, some of the kids come to our school distrusting the idea of school. They come distrusting the idea that the adults or the students are working in collaboration with them to further their best interests. And so we work with the kids to go through a process of building up trust and building up their skills to eventually taking ownership of their own learning. We're working to build independence as much as possible in the school, and that's built into the living curriculum.
So really, there's three big ideas behind living curriculum. It's living in the sense that it's developed in negotiation with their teachers and with support by the person living it. It's flexible and it's changeable over time, and it's really designed to help them live well in the world and become lifelong learners. So our expectation is that the students are going to be, they need to be expert learners because this next generation out in the world is probably going to have to reinvent themselves over time. My father worked at IBM for 40 years, right? So that's not the kind of careers most of these kids are going to have, and so they need to know how to take that next step as a lifelong learner. That said, the wisdom in the Common Core standards and the next-generation science standards, all of that is part of what we draw upon as we think about what does it mean to think like a scientist, like an historian? How do you, you know, what are the habits of mind that you need? What are the forms of competence in terms of thinking? There are a number of competencies that the school uses that draw from my organization, from Project Zero at the Harvard School of Education. So those are all part of this living curriculum approach. It's actually started to gain some leverage in the field, there are other schools starting to launch living curriculum schools, and we have a publication that came out in the spring in Independent School Magazine, and, you know, when you can get Reggio people and Howard Gardner to do presentations, we'll feel pretty good.
As you should.
So we think that there's something really powerful there, and the agency that students have to plan their learning, and to really plan for the obsolescence of their teachers. You know, as a former teacher, I want to, you know, you want to be there with them, helping them all the way, but you have to realize that, okay, they're going to walk out that door, and you're not in their back pocket, and they've got to know what to do and how to think. So that's the idea behind living curriculum and engaging them in designing their learning opportunities.
One of the things that visitors to our school note, almost every single time that we have people come to the school, is the community that we have at the school, and that's something that we work very hard on. We are informed by the collaborative proactive solutions approach to working with expectations for behavior and academics. This is a strictly non-punitive approach to working with kids, and that requires a lot of hard work and training on the part of our staff. That has been a real focus of effort at the school. It's a conversation-based approach, designed to work with kids to find out from them without putting adult presuppositions on them, what might be getting in their way of meeting any expectations that they might be struggling with at the school. So that's a hallmark of our school and an important aspect of our school. We have a, our Dean of Suits is a trainer for the CPS approach, and so I think it is important for us to know that whenever we're talking about the school. We're also part of the compassionate community movement. That is part of Lives in Balance, which is the organization that we run CPS through, but it also runs in conjunction with making, carrying common program, run through the Harvard Harvard School of Education. So we're very invested in those efforts. I think that might be a good point for me to note, that part of our intentionality as a school is to be, become as integrated as we can in the community that we join. We don't have an intention to be separated out from any community that we belong to, Concord especially. We know Concord well, we're right on the border for a long time, but this goes to the idea of our school, which is that we are about the idea of spreading the sense of community, spreading the sense of camaraderie and citizenship among our students. So, and that's baked into what we do. We reach out to our community, look for experts in fields to come into our school to work with our kids on their independent projects. Every independent project that we do requires that we have an expert come in and work with the kids, or they go to them. So we have a lot of integration with the community, so I thought I'd mention that.
They do service work out, too.
Yes, yeah. And this, I'll just quickly go through this slide, but this is to, just to note that we do focus on supporting our students, and we do it in very, you know, specific ways, very strategic ways. We have supports in our school, in both the middle school and the high school, for special education, we have supports in our school for executive functioning. We work together as a team with our parents, with our specialists, with our students and our teachers, in advisory groups to make sure that every student is fully supported as they go through their day, week, month, year at the school. And that extends into the idea of what it means to leave our school and have a post-Tremont experience. So we continue working with the families after they leave Tremont and have a wonderful time having graduates coming back and visiting the school very frequently throughout the year. Yeah, maybe I said something.
So we just thought we'd put a map up there to show you where we are now. That's the red arrow on your right, and there's the building that we're intending to move to relocate to on the left, and it's really 2.9 miles away. We stayed as close as possible, we didn't want to disrupt our families and our community.
2.9 from your current location and about one mile from where we sit right now.
Yeah.
Is there more to your presentation, or might we open it up a little bit?
No, I'm just saying you have questions.
Thank you very much for having us.
As we understand our role and how it's outlined in the law and with our council... As we understand our role, and how it's outlined in the law and with our council, I would submit you've helped us do our due diligence very nicely here. I would also suggest that more than a few elements of your philosophy are dear to us as well, although we may frame them differently and employ them differently in a K-12 public school, we have initiatives that are not unlike yours, that are very dear to us. I think that we'll have some questions for you, and I want you to take them in the spirit of inquiry, because again, my personal opinion is you've helped us do all the necessary diligence already at this point. We know you have approvals coming from other sources, other governmental authorities, and this is one of them. The law refers to approve a private school, quote-unquote, as our responsibility. We don't approve the Tremont School or disapprove, and you exist with or without us. What we're doing, in point of fact, is approving your operation within the town of Concord. That's, to be more precise, the law doesn't spell it out that way, but that's what we're doing here tonight if we move forward with this. So we want to thank you both for your presentation, I just want to open it up.
Thank you.
Yes, please, when did you sign the lease on your new location?
So the lease was signed June?
Yeah.
June.
Right off June, I don't have the exact date.
Okay, June, when do you expect, we've seen your documentation that you seem doing some renovation and you're expecting safety approval from town, when do you expect to have those?
We, so that is, welcome to the world of contractors, but we are hoping to be in the building, we were told that we would be in the building at the beginning of the school year, but it's very tight on that timeline, so we are making preparation to have a temporary space if need be. We've been talking about a space six miles from here in Weston to exist if we need to have that, and we don't have that lease signed, but we are there prepared to sign a lease with us if we need to.
And we have a few other options as well, so that's, you know, we needed to plan for contingencies just because it's the world of contractors and...
Construction.
Yeah, construction.
So I would like to actually address my colleagues. And you, thank you very much for the presentation. It's really enlightening, it's very nice, the values are amazing. I'm afraid that what I'm going to say here, it's not criticism, it's just to the question of our role, which I'm not assured, I agree with some of my colleagues and with the superintendent. The fact for me that the law says shall approve does not release us some responsibility. It gives us an instruction that we have to check a few things, and then if we have it, we shall approve. I don't see, I don't see the conflict that the superintendent was referring to, nor I see it as any way releasing us as a school committee from responsibility to check things. For me, the law is one of the most amazing, unclear pieces of legislation. And I want to ask a question to the superintendent, because values are amazing, and I don't have the tools to actually judge how mixed age groups and your living curriculum refers to the one, only clear thing about the law. The law says, when satisfied that the instruction in all the studies required by law equals in thoroughness and efficiency, and in the progress made during in the public school in the same time. And here's my question to the superintendent, because you're the only person that can answer this for me. Did you check it, and are you going to state that you endorse their curriculum in this? Because you understand the living and the, it's all nice, but I don't have the weight to actually judge whether it has any correlation to the words of the law.
Certainly it does, I think we heard even more tonight that takes my early impression of the documents we received last week and validates that. What I hear is different is a small learning environment, a very small teacher-staff-student ratio, and a lot of student choice that is available in that kind of environment. I heard Common Core standards, which we are all, we are mandated to, they have a choice, so that's an interesting equity decision on their part to even follow those, they do not have to. I hear an environment that's very similar to a range of other private school settings that offer flexibility, high levels of engagement, and really purely alternative methods to get to the curriculum that we might be able to offer to private school. The more I listen to them tonight, I'm certainly not hesitating in believing this is a valid environment for students and that they're coming out with strong skill sets. You know, I think the part I spent a little time on thinking is, because it's in middle and high school, high school curriculum have a lot of, we have a core set of graduation requirements, but there's a lot of option within those. So I think in the secondary level, that's very similar in what we offer. It's different in the middle school because they're going to be able to offer more student voice than we are, just because of the way in which middle schools, and this is on our list to talk about, you're correct, not to the level they're doing it, but like what parts of how we do things would allow for more student voice and option sets to pick the topic you're interested in within a range of content areas. So I hear nothing to be concerned about, I think. The other thing we know for sure, private schools live and breathe their enrollments, and a private school that's got some longevity to it starts to show its value here. And the one part I'll add, we work very collaboratively with the private schools in town, that's something I've spent some time on this year. One, we transport some of their kids by law, but two, we're all here educating kids, and we believe that that's a value we all share, and especially in a community like Concord. And the kids come and go, a lot of our, our kids do not make choices to go to private and not come back to the public schools. So these are, we have many families with all different things going on, and we really work to repair that value of no judgment to go out, judgment, we're glad if you're here, we're glad to work with the private schools and build some community across the educational structure in Concord, so.
So the answer is?
It's a long-winded yes, yeah.
So long, and honestly, to my colleagues, I have entered, I have a problem. Because the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, in its advisory and approval of Massachusetts private schools, once again is doing a mishmash of the whole thing, and they speak about some pre-terrestrial approval of a private school by school committee. And in this, they go out from the strict wording of Article 76.1, and start speaking about certificate of occupancy, fire inspection, safety inspection, elevator inspection, compliance with LEED paint, compliance with other, which actually, to me, makes sense. To me, because at the end of the day, we, as school committee, have to approve a school that serves kids in our district. And at the end of the day, if we know, you know, we need to know that it's safe, we need to know that they have all the town approval from fire department, from police, every other, I don't know if before, I don't know if in condition, but I don't agree, I don't agree, I'm concerned about limiting it only to the question of the curriculum.
If I might, our task is around the educational component, and this is, we will not interfere with fire department authority or any other governmental authority, but what we do here, should we approve it, doesn't impact any of those other approvals. You have all of those hurdles to jump, and you know that. One of my questions, might be just practical and curious, is this, what are you doing to manage the stress on the part of faculty and students because of the uncertainty you're dealing with, with timing right now? Because I know you're growing resilient kids, but this is tough for them, how are you managing that?
Right. So they know that, they know what the contingency plans are. It's not ideal, it's not the way one would like to move a school. So, you know, the space that they, the families have invited in to see the space that we may be temporarily in, so we've been doing that, they've come by to see middle set screen, we really hope not to have to go down that road, but if that should happen, we have to, right? But we do need those additional approvals, those are not, you know, your approval does not allow us to move into a building without those other okays. And if I could add to what Dr. Hunter said, we, for our curriculum, because our kids are going to college, we have carefully mapped against the kinds of expectations that colleges have.
We've passed this hurdle.
We've passed it, so you feel good with it? Okay, good, good.
I will chime in on the other topic, though, I did talk to the fire chief late last week, and we're in agreement that this approval, you can't make them contingent on each other. This approval is really about, it really is about programmatic, I know Desi put a number of other pieces there, I think that's just so you've got a big picture view of the building and such, and I think in other environments, there's probably more concern there than Concord, frankly, but their approval will be based on their criteria, our approval really needs to be based on ours, which your purview and my opinion and in consultation with legal counsel, is the educational learning, and supportive that this environment is equitable, and that's still a tough word for all of us, opportunity for kids on par with the public school.
I'm certainly very comfortable with town departments having the capacity to carry out the functions they need to carry out to prove out all those things that you outlined. They're really, you know, they're far more capable of doing that than we would be, and frankly, I'm glad they are, because I wouldn't want to have to divert from the things we're doing to understand those. And I agree with Uthival, and that, you know, I look to you for the determination that the program is up to snuff, and it sounds like it is, and it's, I mean, I kept hearing things that made me think of our own Rivers program.
Absolutely.
And I don't know if you're familiar with that, or Michael Goodwin, I'm sure he'd love to know what you're doing, and know you, and you know him, because he's quite talented, and we're lucky to have him here, and, you know, this is, we do a shred of what you're doing through the whole middle school and high school piece, but we've found it to be a strong program for kids who are suffering from some of the same issues you talked about, so. I think it's interesting that you're settling in here, because we have people coming from other towns to see what's going on in Rivers, and getting incorporated into other districts. So, you know, maybe there's some symbiosis there that will develop as you're in town here.
Yeah, and I just think it's a very important part of who we are, is that we don't consider ourselves to be better or worse, or one form of education be better or worse than the other. We consider ourselves to be part of a community and an environment where we're trying to do best work for all of the kids in an environment, and we offer a school that frankly is not the best environment for a lot of kids. There are a lot of kids who don't want to be in this small environment like that.
Just small.
But the kids who are at our school, and to get to your point about communicating with the staff and the community, is that they're incredibly dedicated to the school. We haven't had a single issue with a single family or staff member about this, the difficulty of this transition, which has been difficult, because we're doing something that each member of the staff and each member of the community believes is the best for them. Every teacher that we have feels like this is the environment that I want to be teaching. It's not the best teaching environment for everybody, but for our teachers it is, and for our kids, this is the best place for them. And so they're incredibly supportive of us through this period, which has been really heartening. And they're excited to be finding a home, right, as well.
Let's continue, Uthival, do you have more?
Yes, it's very nice, because despite the fact it's very obvious you don't need my vote, but maybe it'd be nice to have my vote, I would like you to declare clearly to me to the protocol here, that you, despite of your difficult transition and situation, you will actually commit to the committee here, that you will never actually move kids into the school in Concord before you get all the correct documentation from the fire from...
The fire chief was very clear with me that that will not happen.
But I need to vote about it, and I have a bit, maybe based on a little bit of experience, I like my legal interpretation of laws and of others. So...
We would never do that.
We cannot, we would not, we cannot, we have not done that before.
I'll just say, it's going, you know, I observed the NEAS process at the high school, and it was incredibly rigorous and time-consuming, and it does, you know, comes with some pluses and some minuses. At the end of the day, I think it gives you something to reflect on, as you said, but just the fact that you went through the process, where I don't feel I had to, that says a lot to me about the commitment going forward, that this is a very serious endeavor, and you wouldn't be going through this rather painful process if it wasn't, so. And I, you know, with the recommendation of the superintendent, I feel very comfortable voting yes, so.
Welcome to Concord.
I could echo all that, and what you've told us today. I will say, just for the record, if I understand that time constraints here are under, we like to have a little more time to assess these kinds of things than we had in this situation. So for any other private schools who are thinking of coming to Concord, don't come to us two weeks before you're going to open.
Like, they normally won't vote on something the first time I bring it, so just know we're trying really hard to make this work.
Very much appreciate it.
I can actually comment to the policy committee that we've got something to look at.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So with that, I would suggest that our motion not include that the approval be contingent on or be related to all the other approvals, you've already made expressly clear the fact that that's a given and a promise, so instead, I would ask for a motion that the Concord School Committee...
So I need to take this motion, so I need to take this motion.
Would you like to amend the motion, or?
No, no, I want to actually suggest a motion, bring a motion to approve a school in Concord.
Second. Discussion, we've had some.
Is that, is that sufficient?
It's no small feat to turn Uthival's thing up. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, welcome, and we look forward to working with you, and we know that you've got a good deal of collaboration going on under your roof, there will be a lot of collaboration around the town and with the public schools as well, I'm sure, in coming years, so best of luck.
Thank you very much.
I apologize, but I'm sure that you'd like to move to a district where the school committee is taking their roles seriously.
No need to apologize at all, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
Good luck with your renovations.
Thanks.
All right. I want to acknowledge we have Jack McGuire in the room, Jack's a neighbor of the school and is here, I think, as an interested party, so thank you for joining us.
My pleasure.
Okay, let's see what else we have. So now we move on to our other action items, the next one is a, let's see, the Grade Eight Field Trip to Washington DC. This is a trip well-known to everyone who's had a child in middle school and every child who's gone through our eighth grade. What's it look like in the coming year in terms of same and different successful efforts in the past?
So Mr. Cameron, who is leading tours, or he would be himself, he's getting the families into the school, so I told him to be there.
Yes.
We spent a lot of time our first two years together, sort of processing and taking in the trip, and the pros and cons, many, many pros, the largest con being the bus ride. And so we've been talking on whether there are other options, indeed there are. So he spent some time over the last year, almost actually, working with one of the local agencies to get a sense of what that would involve. The primary task of considering going by plane rather than buses cost... The primary task of considering going by plane rather than buses costs, of course. What we see right now, so you have a frame, reference of how the trip goes, they leave early, early in the first day, 5:00, 5:30 a.m., they drive all day, and then they actually get to DC and go out to the sites, which astonishes me, they've got the wherewithal to still do that. They spend two days in the city, and then the third day they do a little bit of touring, then they get on the bus about noon and come back and get back into town at midnight or so. So what he's proposing with the help of this, this company, is to fly this coming spring. If you look at the numbers that are in your packet, the student price for the bus would be $8.20. This year it was $8.55, so we actually got that down a little bit through the collaboration of this group. The flight would be $10.49, so we're looking at about $150 difference. And the gain would be substantial in terms of time available in the city. And prob, you know, we might not leave at 5:00 a.m., we might leave a little bit later in the morning, just to make that easier on families. So that's the request, and that's why it's coming to you now in August, because if there's any interest in sticking with the bus, we not want to do that, but we wanted to give you time to process. So that's the suggested trip, is a trip out on June 5th. And you'll see he actually moved it from, till the weekend, so they leave Friday and are back Monday, which is notably different than what we've been doing. They've been leaving Monday, coming back, or leaving Tuesday morning, coming back Friday. So this is actually less school-related time. We don't have actual flights booked yet, so I couldn't give you those actual times of departure and such, but we think there's a value add here.
How many kids?
The entire eighth grade class usually goes, 250-ish, depending on the size of the class.
Did they check the possibility of not using commercial airlines, but chartering an aircraft?
I don't know the answer to that. I know the commercial airlines are very versed in doing these kind of big group trips and construction.
What's the size of an aircraft? 250 people?
Yeah.
Seven-sir. The question is if this is not something they want to quickly check before they, you know, we have hands come.
Indeed, we do. I can certainly double-check with Mr. Cameron. I know the charge, having met with this group, with him about a year and a half ago, they are very aware of our cost parameters. So I can ask if they consider that, but I expect they look for the most economic option.
Or the most, you know, the other question is, so how many kids need subsidies for this? What will be the, in the difference, what would be the burden for the...
Yeah, this is actually a trip that we've been very successful at offering financial assistance to. Mr. Cameron's looking right now at fundraising opportunities that he might consider, as a school, not as individual kids, just to replenish that, that funding stream that's been available. So it's, it's been a trip that no child has ever been denied. So if we can give you more facts, I have to have him bring those to me, share out the costs.
So it's usually, he usually covers those.
Yeah, we have had a parent, I mean, this is the story of what this community can be. We actually had a parent last year in asking those kind of questions, she could, not for her own child, she was very able to fund that. She actually asked if all the other kids were taken care of, since you approved a $4,000 donation towards the cost of the trip for other students. So we've, we've been able to have funding available, we've used more of it the last year or two to replenish it.
But if we need more, if we're doing it that way?
We would if the full cost needs to be incurred, sure.
How many chaperones, and we obviously have to pick up that cost, right?
The EF builds it in to the proposal, so it's one chaperone for every 10 kids.
Got it, okay.
And it's included right within the proposal.
One chaperone per 10 kids.
I'm done. You want to go?
No, but is it really, I don't know what are the legal, but is it needed?
That's very typical, actually.
Really?
Yes.
How many kids on the bus?
Yeah.
Because there's many schools in DC at the same time.
Yeah.
So it's a little chaotic.
Yeah.
I, I share the interest in knowing what a chartered flight might be versus this, but at the same time, I'm also a little concerned about liability issues. I'd rather use, you know, a major airline.
It's usually a major airlines that does the charter.
Than a charter that we don't know.
We can do that research.
It's actually a major airlines that have the confirmation of the charter. Nobody holds seven-sir.
So I think we would expect from you then to follow up on this with information. Programmatically, what does a weekend trip do? This refers to four days, but it's what, travel Friday, Saturday, Sunday in town, and return?
Return Monday.
Monday, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Are they denied anything they would do during a weekday, trips to Congress?
I don't believe so. You can see the artilleries in the packet, and that looks completely parallel to what we're used to.
Has the air alternative been discussed with any parents informed?
No, we wanted your, we wanted your input first.
Another question, of course, in Washington DC, in price of accommodation into the weekend and midweek, that actually might influence prices as well.
They don't usually stay in Washington?
No, they usually stay out of Maryland and truck themselves in daily, which this is a better plan, I think, in terms of access to the city.
And EF has established relationships.
Very much so. That was one of the, we're actually shifting companies as part of this discussion, and part of that was the package that EF offered, where staying in the city, they could pursue flights for us, incorporate the chaperones in. It was, it just felt like a great, great combination.
How many hours of drive is it?
That's 10 hours.
10, he's...
They have 10 hours in bus?
Takes me 10 hours, so a bus has got to be even longer.
They got there remarkably fast, but still, they need to stop. It is, it does chew up their whole day, and they're exhausted.
You know, my person view this as they should fly, but it would be nice to actually know.
Yeah, we can, we can do that homework and bring it back.
So I think we...
Explode everything.
We can approve the trip and still expect Mr. Cameron to provide information that suggests he's comfortable with the additional work and research he's done to put this together in terms of logistical elements.
Do you give indication, do you give indication, I think, you know, I don't know what are my colleagues, but giving indication that we tend to agree to the flights?
Yeah, that would be a great first.
And then we suggest that he will, at least, that's what I think.
Okay, that sounds good.
Good.
So if you want to hold approval, let us bring things back. We can say that the intention of this direction is supported, and do a little more homework and fine-tuning and...
What, do you give the expectation to book this by September?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
I think we're trying to, I'm sure by the end of September we need to solidify it, but I think we have time to take your questions and get...
So if I'm correct, we're prepared to support it, and we'll do so on here, a little more information.
Yeah, why don't we put it on the September 10th agenda, which is at Concord meeting?
Excellent, good, thank you.
So one other question, do you think you might have a harder time finding chaperones due in the weekend?
I don't know. They will have an easier fun.
I don't know.
No, because you've got teachers with children.
It'd actually be easier, because the second parent's home, versus two working parents, and somebody goes.
Sure.
But this can be a piece of the additional homework, you know, to hear from Mr. Cameron. What are the, the pros and potential cons of the shift to a weekend, pros and potential cons of shift to air?
Their working day.
What was, is there a legal requirement of chaperone pair of kids?
No.
The safety.
No.
So it's what, in our estimation, is reasonable and prudent, and truly has the safety and security of the kids first and foremost. Because as soon as we get them out of the school, safety and security and supervision are no longer running a second to instruction, they're running a first.
Indeed.
All right.
I wonder if it might be cheaper to get a hotel room in DC on the weekend, than spent my experience, barring a Women's March, or Elizabeth Warren inauguration or something.
Be sure there's not a march that weekend.
Mr. Cameron has very little going on for the next couple of weeks, he can figure this out.
Yeah, sure, yeah, definitely. We'll be glad to bring that back.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll come back to that one, and that brings us to a vote to approve a gift check from the Concord Middle School PTG for an outdoor classroom. And do you want to give us any background?
I do, because there's a complimentary, equally great side of this story. CEF actually funded a significant amount of money towards an outdoor classroom at Stanborn. This is meant to support that and round that out.
To who?
Concord Education Fund. It's all portable, so it can go to the new school. And we're very thoughtful in making sure we were...
Is it in the back of the, by the...
If you're in the cafeteria, looking into the courtyard, it's going to be on the, there's some plant area there, and then on the other side. So it's all going to get, the plant area's going to get groomed and tidied up, and then there's going to be seating, and some patio blocks put down, it's going to be fantastic. So this is meant to support and complement that, just to round out the project, and it perfectly aligns with the strategic plan and the outdoor facilities maximizing the use of what we have. And I think to do it at Stanford's pretty exciting, because it's a hard place to maximize sometimes, so.
Yeah, good, and very deserving of more than...
Indeed, indeed.
Yeah, good. So do we have a motion to approve the gift check in the amount of $2,800 from the Concord Middle School PTG for the outdoor classroom?
So...
Second.
Any more discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and with thanks to the PTG, and of course, the Ed Fund, our steadfast supporter as well. And that brings us to then the item that Cynthia, you brought us up to date on, and we have wording here that the Concord School Committee votes to appoint a representative to the Concord Capital Planning Task Force. And again, this is a task force formed by the Select Board, Town of Concord, for purposes of long-range perspectives on capital projects, town and school.
Correct.
As a single collective responsibility and a look ahead to fiscal burdens and fiscal responsibilities and town service and support and delivery. All of that, all of the above.
Right, and with the word, you know, task force, it will be a committee in the sense of open meeting law and all the, all the things that committees abide by. Because it's, it's appointed by the Select Board, so it has to be, just like our committee committees.
Is there, do we have anything to say about the charge, or the charge is already...
The charge has, it has received some, some good attention over the summer, and early in June, late in June, we gave some comments.
I remember, I was in a remote participation, and I already asked this before, and I ask it again. You're a very busy superintendent of school and school director of finance and operation, why do they both have to be there? I guess they want to...
I might say I'm glad they both have access to it, so we can get either one of them in the room, or both. Can they function without both of you in the room? Yes.
My way to actually hint to them.
I hear you, yeah. I think there's an intention, and I, you know, when this all first started to get talked on, one of the questions I got asked by the Select Board was sort of the value of this, anytime that the two of us and their leadership, both the employee leadership and the elected leadership can get in the same room, there are benefits that I think probably even surpass a capital planning project. I think the other part of this is the middle school's getting out of head of all of these projects, and I think we need to really participate as a collaborative, cooperative entity. And I think that means our time is really valuable, because I think we've all heard and consensed that the concern is that with the middle school running as fast as it is, does it jeopardize any of their needs? And I think we want to be sure we're in the room to say, no, let's work together to make sure that isn't the case. So I'm glad to be there.
Yeah, I think of it as an, sorry, I think of it as an opportunity, especially with Mr. Crane coming on board.
Sure.
And a relatively youngish Select Board, new people. So I think it's, it's good, can be a good thing.
But your point's well taken.
Absolutely.
Your point's very, very well taken.
You know, I'm envisioning it's not a huge commitment here, that it's a...
And did we hear six months before a report might be produced?
I mean, if you look at the timeline, that would be before, right before town meeting, so we'll see. It's a rather...
I'm a little surprised by, based on what I heard leading up to this, that the charge has this process, will then be used annually to develop a 10-year capital plan. Is it foreseen that they will convene a new task force every year? Or is that a part of the schedule?
I think the book is, one of those kind of a business plan that is extremely flexible according to needs.
Just what it took to get it through.
I think, with Mr. Crane's, what I think is...
That's the answer, yeah. So nobody chose to move the wording of the motion, and I think that's because we're prepared to have it read. The Concord School Committee votes to appoint Cynthia Rainey as a school committee representative to the Concord Capital Planning Task Force, if we have your, your approval.
I'd be happy to do it.
And the support of the committee members.
Unless there's other interest, correct?
Unless Yuval has, unless you're not as busy as Laura.
I can do one plus one.
So I might contain a motion, I did contain a motion to that effect. Thanks to Cynthia for not protesting.
May I move to vote Cynthia Rainey as a representative of school committee to the Concord Capital Planning Task Force?
Second.
Thank you. More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and you'll correspond with the committee on Cynthia's behalf.
Thank you.
Do you need that out of your office? Okay. And I think that leads us to our adjournment, unless there's any other comments?
I was just going to run upcoming meetings.
Yes, please.
We're starting to get some momentum back here, if you're okay with that?
Yes, please, thank you.
Opening day for staff is next Monday, and all of you are invited to be part of that welcome and the keynote, so that's beginning. Breakfast is at 7:30. Opening speeches, which include Heather and Wally, the union presidents, myself, and then the keynote, are from 8:00 to 10:30. So please feel free to join us at the high school. August 27th of next week, we have our school committee workshop scheduled for 5 o'clock. And then September 10th is our first regular Concord meeting, and then the 24th for the joint, so.
And not to sound ungracious to the community, but there was not an invitation to the community to the Monday morning, just because of space.
To the school committee members, correct. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, hearing no other business, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Sumut.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, all. And the meeting is adjourned.